So, let me just say that we, we called the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We did the pledge of allegiance and we have approved the minutes from July 16th and July 20th, on the Board of Alderman. So, we are on to communications from the mayor.
Outside the rail.
Okay. We are outside the rail. Is there anybody outside the rail to address the board of matters not on the agenda? Okay. Chief Kukolan, nothing? Okay. Alright, so we are on to communications from the mayor. And then additions and deletions to the agenda. There are none. So, we are on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. First order of business is Attorney Blumer requests executive session regarding probable litigation and negotiation of a contract. If we could move that to the end of the agenda, please?
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will address that at the end. So, we're on to Commissioner Wenberg consulting services for combination in Piedmont Pond's contract amendment. Commissioner Wenberg.
Hi. Hopefully you folks have had a chance to review the memo and the, the scope of services. The only thing I want to emphasize is that we want to make sure that whether you refer to committee or suspend the rules and, and look at this, the consensus tonight, that if you do approve it, make it contingent upon the state assuring us that we can use the whisper, so-called whisper funds to pay for this because this is unbudgeted and the funding, 100% of the funding will come through the state whisper loan slash grant program. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them, but the memo is pretty straightforward. This is just a continuation of the work that Malone and McBroom has done over the last several years to bring us to this point relative to moving toward actual modifications to the ponds, construction and so forth. The project has moved to a phase where, and the city attorney can speak to this, the city engineer has been working with the Corps of Engineers. We expect that they will be, actually they have already provided us with draft agreements and calendars, scopes of work and so forth that we are reviewing. We also have a whole bunch of information we have to provide to them. When that gets to a point where it's sufficiently far along, we will be bringing that to the board for your consideration so that that part of the project can proceed. But we are going to require the acquisition or at least fishing control over additional lands at Piedmont Pond in order to satisfy the Corps' requirements for that property. And the Malone and McBroom folks have been working with the city attorney and his consulting attorney to prepare the appropriate documents for those of matters so that we can approach them and hopefully get their approval.
So, are there any questions of the commissioner in regards to the Moonbrook Pond modification project? Alderman Grusso?
I don't know what I don't have in front of me as I read it somewhere earlier. What, what would he like us to do with it? Refer to committee or approve it or?
You can do either. You can refer or you can suspend the rules this evening and take the issue up if you would like.
I'd make a motion to suspend the rules.
Target. So, the motion on the floor is to suspend the rules and it's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 So, the motion carries. Alderman Grusso, do you have the motion in front of you?
I don't. I, I can't find this thing, like I said, but. Maybe the.
Yeah.
I think Alderman Depoy has it, Alderman Grusso.
Thank you, if you could. Where it went.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to authorize the public works to execute the attached.
Alderman Depoy, you're breaking up, so we're not hearing. Okay. So, Alderman Depoy? Alderman DePoy?
Uh, thanks. So, I'll make a motion that the board authorize the commissioner of public works to execute the Moonbrook Pond Modification Project Implementation Assistance Proposal from Malone and McBroom for the lump sum fee of $22,000 contingent upon confirmation from the state of Vermont that costs incurred are reimbursable through the watershed improvements sponsorship program.
Second.
Okay. Is there any debate on the motion to approve? None. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We are listening to Recreation Superintendent Peters' request for donated time. With us, you are with us.
Okay, so this is for an additional request for Colleen Shadick, who is currently on maternity leave from April Choffey, who has realized she is not going to be able to use her additional 50 hours of vacation. She wants to donate that to Colleen Shadick.
We need a motion to suspend the rules?
I'll move.
With a second?
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. So, we need a motion to approve the donation of time in the amount of 50 hours?
I'll move.
Second.
Any debate on the motion to donate donation of time? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Next, we're on to reports of standing committees. Alderman Mattis, charter and ordinance.
The, of the charter and ordinance committee was held on Wednesday, July 22nd. It convened remotely at 5:30 PM. Committee members present were myself, Alderman Natori, and Alderman Humphrey. Others present were Board President Whitcomb, Alderman Talbot and Ryan, City Attorney Blumer, Police Chief Kukolan, Acting Fire Chief Lovett, Mickey Heineman from the downtown partnership, and Gordon Burchillo from the Herald. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the use of masks in the city in order to slow the spread of COVID-19. Should the Board of Aldermen pass an ordinance requiring the use of face covering in indoor spaces that are open to the public? Or should the Board sign a resolution requiring or encouraging the use of face coverings? It was acknowledged that Governor Scott knew well issued a mandate requiring masks, but we agreed we still needed to craft our own resolution without delay. Some Aldermen supported passing an ordinance requiring masks. Chief Kukolan said he prefers a focus on education and voluntary compliance. Chief Lovett also preferred education and encouragement to a mandate. He said, however, that he is worried about apparent relaxation of community involvement in health efforts and felt that an attitude of "it won't happen to me" has been driving an increase in disease incidence, along with a decrease in the average age of people stricken with the disease. The committee agreed to pursue a resolution instead of an ordinance and have it focus on education and encouragement. The discussion focused on the relative effectiveness of the words "require," "encourage," and "should." The committee also discussed specific clauses that have been used by other municipalities in Vermont. Alderwoman Humphrey made the motion to ask the committee chair and the city attorney to draft a resolution saying that people should wear masks in public. The motion passed 3-0. I have a note about that. The meeting adjourned about 6:20, and my note is that given that two days later, the governor did make an executive order requiring the use of masks in public, I drafted a resolution using clauses that were more appropriate to the new situation. And this being the case, the motion out of committee isn't one that makes sense to move now, and instead, a new motion can be made concerning the new possible resolution. Thank you.
So, Alderman Mattis, the first part is for information only because there was no motion coming out of the committee, but you do have a resolution. Do you choose to read the resolution and ask that it be adopted?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, here is the resolution. Resolution encouraging the use of face coverings during COVID-19 state of emergency. Whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, recommend the use of simple cloth face coverings to slow the spread of the novel coronavirus disease, COVID-19, and to help prevent people who may unknowingly have the virus from transmitting it to others. And whereas, in order to protect public health and the progress Vermont has achieved in suppressing the virus, Governor Phil Scott has made the following executive order. Quote, "Vermonters shall wear masks or cloth facial coverings over their nose and mouth anytime they are in public spaces, indoors or outdoors, where they come in contact with others from outside their households, especially in congregate settings, and where it is not possible to maintain a physical distance of at least six feet," end quote. Whereas, the Rutland City Board of Aldermen recognized the potentially disastrous effects COVID-19 could have and has had on its citizens and economy were citizens and business not to follow the responsible and creative measures to conduct business in a manner consistent with CDC and Vermont Department of Health, social distancing guidelines, and other health recommendations. And whereas, the Rutland City Board of Aldermen intends this resolution to be used as an educational tool and aid for business and the community to assist in ensuring the health and economic vitality of our community. The intent is to encourage cooperation, not confrontation. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rutland City Board of Aldermen hereby affirm that wearing a face covering is an important act we should do in an effort to protect others from an infection that we may not even know we have. Be it further resolved that the Rutland City Board of Aldermen hereby appreciate and thank all businesses and individuals for doing their part to prevent the spread of this deadly virus. Face coverings should meet the following criteria. For cloth face coverings, fit snugly but comfortably against the side of the face, be secured with ties or ear loops, include multiple layers of fabric, allow for breathing without restriction while covering both nose and mouth, and be able to be laundered and machine dried without damage or change to shape. For face shields, be made with a clear plastic such as polyethylene terephthalate or PET, extend to below the chin and to the ears, and have no exposed gap between the forehead and the shield's headpiece. For other masks types, be a commercially available disposable mask, and unless necessary for medical reasons, not be a medical N95 mask so as to avoid depleting the supply of such critical masks for healthcare workers and first responders. Cloth face coverings should not be placed on children under age 2, anyone who has trouble breathing, or anyone who is unconscious, incapacitated, or otherwise unable to remove the mask without assistance. Do I make a motion now to pass that resolution? Or do I make a motion to suspend the rules?
Suspend the rules.
Okay. That, that's fine. I was going to ask Attorney Blumer because the issue was in committee and addressing committee, just the resolution was not written in committee. But we can move to suspend the rules. It was moved, what, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor suspending the rules, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. So, Rebecca Alderman Mattis?
And I move that the Board adopt the resolution encouraging the use of face coverings during COVID-19 state of emergency.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to adopt the resolution. As read, is there any debate? Seeing? Oh, Alderman Grusso?
Yeah, I just, like I tell you, I was in the hospital there, um, not quite two weeks ago in Dartmouth, I had the COVID test, and of course, I'm okay. I have no medical background, but probably no one on this board is more exposed out in public to, to public places than I am. I call on businesses, I'm in and out of places doing stories. In my opinion, the, the night we were sworn in and we had the, I guess he's the president of the hospital come in, he outlined things to do to, to try not to be affected by the virus, and he had things about cleaning your hands and, and, you know, not touching your face. That's not addressed here. I see a lot of people with these masks fidgeting with them, talking to one guy, as he talked, his mask would go down and he pushed it back up, and he was touching, you know, counters and the door bar in a store. I don't, I don't, you know, and then the other one I don't like is indoors and, and outside of your household. I mean, if I don't want to wear a mask outside of my house, I'm on my property, I'm not wearing a mask, so I don't like these things. And like I said, the president of the hospital, I thought, did a wonderful, wonderful job covering all facets of this, and, and I'm not picking on the Alderman for doing this. She did a lot of work on this, but I just think this doesn't really cover all of it, and I, I, I don't like doing these things when, I don't, I'm not comfortable if this is exactly the right way to do it, so I'm just going to vote no because of my lack of experience or, or knowledge on, 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 on this kind of a, of a, a solution to a problem, and I don't like the masks either, and I, I only wear them at places where you say you have to, and I take them off when I come out the door, and, and that's it. I just don't take it personally, but I'm, I'm not educated enough, but there's some things I think that are missing in it, and, and I'm just going to be voting no, and, and again, I don't like that it says in here, indoors or outside of your household. I don't think that's fair, so I will be voting no. Again, don't take it personally, it doesn't seem to me that it's comprehensive enough, and that's just my opinion, that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Yeah, this is simply a resolution, it's not a, I mean, we can't mandate legally anyway, correct? Right?
Is that a question for me or a question for Attorney Blumer?
Yeah, good point. Yeah, Attorney Blumer, right?
There's some question, I guess, as now that the governor has weighed in whether the local government can kind of preempt what the state has done, but we didn't really research it because we didn't think that was where the, where the Board was heading. But this, this doesn't, this, definitely this version does not mandate anything. It, it strongly encourages slash, you know, I think we talked in committee about the, the language. It comes the closest that it can to sort of mandating, but it's not, it's not intended to mandate, and it's not intended to be enforced, is my understanding.
Yeah, that's just, you know, if I may continue, I mean, some, I do agree with Alderman Grusso on a couple of things. I mean, I, you know, I wear the mask where I, where it's required. I do travel around the state, I do see customers myself too, and I, I do abide by their wishes too, so. Just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Any other debate? Alderman Natori? Chris can't hear you, cannot hear you. We'll come back to you. See if he can get his audio going.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry about that. So, a couple of points that Alderman Grusso had talked about, the indoors and outdoors, that's from the governor's mandate, and, you know, that is what it is, that's a state mandate that he has enacted. I think, you know, obviously, we met about this resolution before the governor made his mandate, and I think that the conversation that we had, and it, it was this, yeah, I would have appreciated more input at that conversation. I don't think we had enough debate there. But I, I think we were trying to help people see the value of masks and the value of what, what they could do. But I was of the mindset that we shouldn't mandate anything, that we really just needed to help people understand where their impact was, and by encouraging it, people would see where it was appropriate for them. The governor has taken it a step farther and mandated it, and I think that this resolution nicely walks that line between acknowledging that the governor has mandated it, but what are we really hoping to accomplish? We're hoping to accomplish that our economy can continue to open, that people can continue to come and visit and not infect other people, and I think this resolution helps further that cause. And if we would like to put in things about washing hands and doing those pieces, I'm absolutely in favor of that. I, I, I don't think that that hurts at all, to the point that people are always touching their masks, absolutely. So, if we'd like to encourage that language, if that would help people support it, then I would be glad to add those pieces. But I'm in favor of the resolution because I think it helps encourage our community members to see the reasons that we should be wearing masks when appropriate. Thank you.
Anyone else have any debate on the resolution? Alderman Morris?
I actually realized something. When I was drafting this, as, as instructed, I was using pieces from the resolutions passed in other cities and towns in Vermont, and the recommendations about face coverings was actually in Burlington's resolution. And it said that it came from the CDC, which it did for cloth face coverings, but I didn't realize that until recently when I just wanted to check up on it because I wanted to make sure of, of everything that was in here. And on the CDC website, I, I saw that they actually don't recommend face shields as a replacement for masks. And if the purpose of this resolution is to be, is, or if, if it is in part to be educational, that might be an important piece of educa, of education to tell people, hey, face shields are not recommended by the CDC as a replacement for cloth masks. And so, I would actually amend my motion to include a bullet under face shields that says "are not recommended by the CDC as a replacement for cloth masks."
Does a secondary accept the amendment? I believe, Michael, it was Alderman Talbot that was who did second the motion. So, Alderman Mattis has amended the motion to add that bullet for face shields. Any other debate to the resolution for face coverings during COVID-19 state of emergency? If not, all those in favor of the res, adopting the resolution, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. So, Attorney Blumer, do we need to do a roll call for the no votes, correct?
Yes. Well, yeah, however you want to do it, it probably makes sense to just go through the whole.
Right. So, I'd ask the clerk if he would please call the roll in regards to the resolution.
Alderman Grusso?
No.
Alderwoman Humphrey? Alderwoman Ryan?
Yes.
Alderman Natori?
Yes.
Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Alderwoman Mattis?
Yes.
Alderman Gillum?
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Clifford? And Alderman Depoy?
Yes.
Motion passes to 4672.
So, the motion, the resolution has been adopted. Anything else, Alderman Mattis?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Madam President.
I just said I want to make sure that you were all set if there was anything else from charter and ordinance.
Thanks, I'm all set.
Thank you. Okay, we are on to Alderman Clifford, Public Works.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The DPW committee met July 28th. I called the meeting to order at 5:30. Present were committee members Clifford, Mattis, Depoy, Humphrey, and Gillum. Other present were President Whitcomb, Alderman Davis, Natori, and Grusso. Commissioner Wenberg, David Creason of Itron, DP, Business Manager Gail Grusso, Attorney Blumer, Assistant Treasurer Lynn Onquist, and Treasurer Markowski. I asked the commissioner to introduce David Creason, and Commissioner summarized how Itron became the AMI vendor for the system upgrade that Mr. Creason was a leader of, Mr. Creason was a leader, excuse me, of the Itron, I, working to complete and troubleshoot the installation. Shared a short PowerPoint summarizing the scope and schedule of the project. He emphasized that Itron's primary focus is to correct and to complete the work that was started by Fathom, and they are committed to the ultimate success of the project for Rupp. Toward that end, Itron had a field engineer in Rupp in connecting equipment, correcting connectivity issues and investigating why some of the radio devices on homes have never communicated with their network. Also, the fifth CGR at Pyco Mountain was scheduled to be installed on Wednesday. Commissioner Wenberg stated that project status, project status calls are held with Itron, the Itron team, every week. Alderman Mattis asked whether the mitigation was a reference to the field engineer and other specific activities Mr. Creason mentioned, and he said it was, that was correct. Alderwoman Davis asked whether the system will alert customers or a city of suspected leaks, as was of Fathom. Mr. Creason explained that suspected leaks in the building will be brought to the attention of the city and the customer if they wish, and the city will also be alerted to suspected tampering with the meters. Mr. Wenberg explained that the devices that detect leaks in the city's distribution system are already functioning, although the installation is not completed. Alderwoman Mattis asked about the number of installations yet to be completed. Commissioner Wenberg said that the city completed nearly 90% of all installations before the COVID stoppage. The department has hired back one of the temporary installers who will complete this work, hopefully by the end of the year. In addition, several hundred installations require repair, repairs inside the homes, and our full-time meter techs are attending to those issues as we make appointments with the homeowners. Alderwoman Mattis asked whether the percentage of the network-connected installations was based upon the total number of accounts, or of accounts, or the total installed so far. Mr. Creason stated that the percentage was based upon the number installed, not the total planned for installation. When everything is done, is to get 98% of the full population reading successfully through the network. Commissioner Wenberg said that the installation at Northeast School had only about 300 meters communicating with it until the wire was fixed last week, and now has nearly 1,097.5% solid data. If the repairs in City Hall and Corcel are similarly effective, we will see a major improvement beyond anything we have seen before. There be no further questions of Mr. Creason. Mr. Creason thanked the committee. And he left. Commissioner Wenberg introduced Gail Grusso to discuss the status of the new billing platform, muni billing. Grusso said that the transition from AUS to muni billing started over, started out slower than expected. But a few weeks before the bills were scheduled to be printed off, Jeff reached out to the owner of muni billing, and she personally saw the balance of the transition and things improved dramatically, including daily checking calls. It's been time to properly review the bills and proactively reach out to customers before the bills arrived. Ms. Grusso reported that during the last quarter bill with AUS, we had 179 inquiries, customers requiring some level of investigation. This quarter, there have been 73. The new meters provide invaluable information in support of the investigations and are a benefit to the city and our customers. Muni billing platform is easy to use and navigate. She stated that had we stayed with AUS, the complexity of the platform would have required an additional full-time staff in the business office. She concluded by saying that this is the most productive possible, she has felt regarding the billing process in two years. She gave several examples of how muni billing had corrected longstanding problems in some accounts with Fathom and AUS, and how the city managed to manage those with affected customers. As Treasurer Markowski, she felt comfortable with the billing and payment process through the new platform. Treasurer Markowski said that the transition with muni billing and taking payment process back into the City Hall was a big improvement. So under COVID, all of the payments have been online or through the mail. Very well with Watersmart, Customer Portal, so online payments have been handled smoothly. Customers can once again pay in person. She expects the improvement will be most apparent because under AUS, it would have taken a minute and a half to process a single payment, and muni billing is much faster and easier. Alderman Davis asked about the overall financial impact of the total effort, and requested Commissioner Wenberg to report on the future, a future meeting. Commissioner Wenberg said he was working with Treasurer Markowski to provide that analysis at a later date. He shared a graph showing the reduced demand of water through COVID shutdown, but pointed out that in June, demand jumped back up. This means that loss revenues for COVID were temporary. Alderman Grusso asked how the expenses were adjusted to make up the revenue loss. Commissioner Wenberg said in addition to the post-saving, small measures were taken, like limiting but he expected that the water and sewer fund will have to be drawn down to cover those losses. He said that there were no, they were not proposing rate increase to cover the, this because the COVID was, loss was temporary. And Alderman Gillum said that he thinks that the public, the watchers by the public had increased due to the lack of rain. And there being further business, Alderman Humphrey moved to adjourn, asked for the projection, and the meeting was adjourned at 6:20 PM. And it was for informational only. Thank you very much.
So before we go forward, we're getting a lot of background noise, so if folks are not muted, please do so, whether it's your computer or your phone. Is there any questions of Alderman Clifford in his DPW committee report? See none. Thank you, Alderman Clifford. Alderman Grusso?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm not a member of the committee. I've attended, I think, all of them, and it's a very well-run committee. I really like it, and I think Paul does a great job. I think Jeff does, and it's very, very productive and very, very informational. So just wanted to throw that out. I like it. I like them. It's a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are on to reports of select committees. Are there any? See none. Reports of representatives. Okay, we're going to move on to petitions, letters, and miscellaneous communications. First up is a special events permit request for Mentor Connector. A thank you lunch for 9:19:20, 11 to 3 at 110 Merchants Row. What is your pleasure?
Do we suspend the rules, Madam Chairman?
Yes, we do.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The doors are closed. Motion carries. Alderman Grusso?
Motion to approve the permit application for the Mentor Connector appreciation day to be held on 9:19:20, from 11 to 3. Is that good enough for the motion?
It is. We have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. The only thing, if I may, the only thing I need, or I did not see, was a sign-off by the city attorney. Not sure if it's needed. Matt?
Yeah, I, I just, I just reviewed it now, and it's fine. And so I can just find Henry tomorrow and put my signature on it.
Thank you so much. So motion on the floor is to, it's been seconded. Alderman Torrey?
Did we have to assign a parking spot, or did we need to do anything with that part of the, the request? There was a piece in there about whether they were going to put the food truck ahead of the bump out or after. I just didn't know if there was something we needed to do for that, or if they can, if that's something that we're working on.
Well, if I may, Chief Phil Collins on the phone, I would assume that that would help with traffic for me, or people please.
They didn't request any.
The picture with vehicles on the street, but that's something the Board of Alderman would approve. I would assume that these are going to be up too.
If I may, Madam President, they were looking at two spots. Prior to the bump out, the spot in front of the bump out was the last parking spot prior to the bump out going in there. They weren't sure if they could utilize that still because their, their actual facility is almost directly across from that spot, which would make access for the volunteers a lot easier, just to go to the food truck and then to come back inside. So that would be their number one choice, as far as that goes. And it was a, it was a parking spot prior to, so I went and physically visited it to see how far it was from the corner, just to make sure there was enough room for traffic to continue to move down and turn. And it looks to me like there's absolutely plenty of room because, like I said, it was the parking spot before.
So I don't know if the board is in agreement that we move to a certain improvement for Mentor Appreciation Day, but ask maybe Chief Phil Collins to have Kevin Barnes come and check that spot to make sure it's acceptable and for continuing to move traffic. Acceptable to the board?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may ask, the boards indulge again, one more time. I have asked those folks to apply for peddler's permit because it would be something that we normally would do. It's a $50 cost for them to have the food truck there. As they're a nonprofit, I know in the past that certain times the board has waived that fee. I don't have a problem if they chose, choose to do so. I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention and see if they might consider that.
So what is the request? If there is no permit before us, are you, are you requesting that they fill one out?
No, I have that, I have the permit that they need. It's a peddler's permit. It's a one-day associated permit for them to utilize that space or a space for that truck, like it would come before a normal person. It's just with nonprofits, sometimes we will waive the fee. So I have the check from them. They've agreed to pay for it. It's $50 for the cost for the day, which is actually going to be like, I think, two hours that they're going to be there, or three hours. So I'm just asking the board, upon past practice, if they would consider waiving that fee for them, and I can just return their $50 fee.
So what's your feeling?
Well, why don't you present it to us like you did the application, right? So we can move it.
Yeah, I don't present those to the board. I just, I'm just making a notice of what they've done in past practice. If we're going to get in the minutia of it, I'll just grant them their permit and collect the fee. It's not a big deal.
No, I, well, I, I think we can certainly have the discussion to, if we so choose, just to waive the peddler's permit cost of $50 for the Mentor Connector if the board is so willing, if we have to just.
I don't mind, I don't mind waiving it, but we don't have it in front of us. That's what I was saying. If they bring it, we can waive it.
I understand, Alderman Grusso, I don't think we don't always have the permit in front of us unless there's a request for waiver from the organization itself. The city clerk is stating is that historically, we do waive these permits. If you're more comfortable with it in front of you, I'll have to just encourage you to go, but.
No, I'll do it tonight if you'd like, Madam Chairman. I just was trying to help. Whatever you want to do, if you want to do it tonight, tell me how to do it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Alderman Torrey to suspend the rules. We have a second. Okay, we have a second from Alderman Humphrey. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman Torrey?
I'll move to waive the fee for the peddler's permit for the Mentor Connector for their food truck on the Mentor Appreciation Day.
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Ryan. Is there any debate? So we're waiving the fee of $50 for the peddler's permit for the Mentor Connector. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All set, hang on.
Madam Chairman, I'd just tell you, the audio is terrible. I didn't hear all that stuff earlier. I'm sorry, I didn't even hear any of it.
Would you like me to repeat the motion, Alderman Grusso?
Heck no, I just let you know, I didn't hear Alderman Torrey's massive motion. Didn't hear a bit of it, so.
You're lying. Lot of background noise, I'm not sure where it's coming from.
Not hearing me is probably a better thing.
Most of it's still needed. This is a special events request for Art in the Park for August 8th and 9th on Main Street.
Suspend the rule.
So we have a motion to suspend the rule. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Pleasure is it's Art in the Park for August 8th and 9th. Art, I believe, King Peters is still with us, Superintendent Superintendent Sherry, are you on the phone?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
And you are caller eight. Yes, I can.
Okay.
Currently, we have a motion just to suspend the rule so we can take the issue up. We also have King Peters here from Recreation, and I believe you all are aware that there are conditions that have been imposed due to COVID-19. So what is your pleasure?
I'm all for the approval.
Okay, so we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second for Alderman Clifford. Is there any debate? Alderman Humphrey?
Thanks. I did have one question. I saw that the number of vendors is significantly less than it has been in the past, so that there can be more space between the booths. But it, are there any out-of-state vendors for this event?
Yes, there are. There are six.
And are they from locations that are approved by the quarantine map that the governors put out?
So, okay, so let me say like two parts of this. One is that when, when you come into Vermont for work reasons, like an authorized work, you're allowed to come without quarantining. But I called all of them because they're from New York. One's from Pennsylvania, the rest are from New York. And they've all been quarantining because they're pretty much going to stay in a hotel, except for somebody who lives in Queensbury. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, I think so. They're quarantining in order to be able to stay in hotels based on the rule.
Exactly, because they have to sign something when they get here.
And the Queensbury, and Queensbury, I don't even, is that?
Glens Falls.
I don't recall.
Queensbury is Warren, Warren County.
And is that a green county right now?
I know that, well, I looked at the map. I'm not sure if it's green or, today it looked like it was orange.
Okay.
But, oh, actually, Warren County was blue, no, it was green. I'm sorry. I'm looking at my notes. I'm sorry. I've got so many notes here. Um, yes, no, 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 that one was the green.
Queensbury splits their, Glens Falls and Lake George are like in ones in Warren and ones in Washington, so it's kind of splits the town there up. I noticed there's no proof of insurance on that. It should, do we have to have that, Alderman Davis?
Well, we do. We have a proof of insurance.
That must, this.
See, if I may, the proof of insurance was sent to me on Friday, so I just missed the packet.
Beautiful. That's all. That and Matt to sign it. I'm good. And I'm sorry to have interrupted Alderman Humphrey. Let's get Art in the Park going.
Thank you, Alderman Grusso. So Superintendent Peters, do you have anything that you would like to add to the discussion?
I think what I would just like to add is that what Sherry has put forth as far as plans definitely will look great on paper. The reason why we brought this to the board, typically, Art in the Park would not have to be approved by the Board of Alderman because it does not require any closing of streets. Of course, you would, you would know of the event. You may ask about it. In this particular situation, because of the pandemic, I do not feel comfortable signing off as a superintendent. I would like the Board of Alderman to sign off on this event. So typically, like I said, it would not require a permit because we're not closing any streets, needing any additional support from department heads.
So there is a question, and I'll get to Alderman Mattis, my apologies. There is a question. Information for those entering and exiting will be taken for contact tracing.
Okay, so should I speak right now?
Yes, if you have the answer for that.
Okay, so for all of the volunteers and all of the exhibitors, they have to check in, so they will have screening. And I know, and I have lists of who's there. For the public attendees to the festival, 150 at a time, A, we are adhering to the ACCD guidance, where we're going to have signage at the entrance at the park and in the park. And, you know, when you're, because when we, when I met with Secretary Curly from the ACCD, we talked about this. So we looked at the farmer's market too, to see how it's handled. And normally, we would not, you know, have to do that. But I don't know what, what you guys would want us to do. But it would be, you know, it would be a little harder to manage. And like I said, the farmer's market doesn't require people signing in.
Okay, I think it was just a question from Acting Mayor Whitcomb as to how that, in case someone shows up positive, how contact tracing could or should occur. So some, some knowledge of folks, especially if you have out, out-of-state vendors. It might be a consideration for the chaffy to maybe keep a log. That would certainly be your call. It's not part of the permit or requirement, unless the board states it is when it approves. Is there any other questions from the superintendent, to the superintendent, or to Sherry for the Art in the Park for August 8th and 9th? Alderman Gillum?
Am I on?
You're on.
Okay, thank you. I did some research today on this issue. I stood in front of Walmart and Price Chopper. 15% of the cars were out-of-staters going into those stores. Farmer's Market on Saturday, another 15% were going through the farmer's market. Then on former street, there was four or five cars from out-of-state. They were dining on Friday night, so if we're going to play by the same rules and treat everybody the same. um, if we're going to be playing by the same rules and treat everybody the same, I think we need to do that for this event also.
Alderman Mattis, my apologies for missing you.
Uh, thank you. I just, I just wanted to say, I was um, happy with the organizers um, creative and responsible, um, you know, problem solving to coming up with a way that they can hold their event. It's always been a great event in Rutland, and it seems like they've done just as good a job as they can to follow the safety guidelines that are in place. So I definitely support it. I'll be voting yes.
Alderman Ryan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I spoke with Sherry on the phone today for about twenty minutes. Um, as a former CHAFI board member years ago and um, a volunteer in the past as well. I really did appreciate how they outlined everything, the safety planning that went into it. Um, I just want to say, there's one suggestion that I talked to Sherry about um, that I didn't see in the safety plan, and that was having a signage for the number of people in the tents. I think regardless if you're outside or not, or if there's, there's, those tents have walls or not. Um, there's still needs to be a, a minimum number, a maximum number of people um, in those tents. So I just asked for, for those to be posted throughout um, each vendor's tent. But other than that, I, I'm in support of this and I hope it goes smoothly.
Alderman Ryan, I thought that was a great idea, and it's going to be in the exhibitor packet as well, so when they check in, I'll let them know that.
Thank you.
Alderman Garusa, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's been around for a long time. You know, I don't make any money on it. It's not, I don't have any part of it. I don't have an exhibit there or anything, but Art in the Park always seems to bring a lot of class to Rutland, and I think it was Alderman Humphrey there who uh, said something about it. It's nice. It uses our park with the gazebo in the middle of it. It just adds a little prestige and with all that's going on, and I want to talk to the person who wants to cancel the Halloween parade because uh, they're taking so much away from Rutland right now, and I know we've got this virus and all that, but it's just, thank God we've got something to have in Rutland because there's so much that has gone away right now. It'd be nice to look, drive by it this weekend. It's going to be neat to see it. I don't always go to it. I haven't been to it a long time, but it'll be neat to see people and life and, and activity going on, and uh, it's a really, really nice event, and I'm going to vote for this and I'm going to support them in any way that I can, and I thank you. And I was kidding, Kim.
Superintendent Peters?
You know, I, I would, you know, of course, we're in support of this. Um, I just want to bring it to the attention, and I'm very happy that, that we are getting so much positivity because um, talking to Sherry over the last four days, I, one of the reasons this was been kind of in a quick, quick turnover is that we didn't know about it. You know, Sherry and I had talked about a month ago, so this was, and, and we, I take my job very seriously as far as what we're at right now in the pandemic. So anyone that utilizes any of our facilities right now does have to have a safety plan. So I was able to walk her through that on Thursday night, or Wednesday night. I also talked to Secretary Curly today, and we're on the same page. The guidance that goes out there from the governor are guidance, and then it's our job as department heads to say, how can we keep the community safe? So um, I appreciate like Lisa's suggestions. I had some suggestions for Sherry, and just know, moving forward as the pandemic, pandemic continues, with these type of events, I will be coming to the board for final approval when we have a large venue, um, because it is going to be a gathering of, of people. And for the farmer's market, we had about three weeks of preparation, meaning me, um, both chiefs, the mayor, and department heads had conversations on how to do this in compliance with um, the guidance. So that's why it's being brought um, to the board tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Humphrey?
Thanks. Um, I am in support of this permit. Um, I just wanted to um, I did have some concerns at first, but after reading through everything, um, I didn't see the, the work that was putting in the safety plan. I just want to recognize Kim and the rec. Department, and I mean, they're kind of at the brunt of making all, a lot of these really tough decisions for our community right now, and the work that they've put in throughout this entire thing has just really kept the bit of normalcy that we're able to have. And so, um, Kim, I do appreciate you kind of bringing this uh, up to us and ensuring that we're, we're helping you in making these decisions going forward, so thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Etori?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to kind of echo uh, Alderwoman Humphrey's uh, point there, um, that i- i- we need um, uh, the rec. Superintendent to step in and help uh, guide us on this, because what, we don't know, you know, how to do that. And to Alderman Garusa's point, we absolutely want to have Art in the Park. It, it is an excellent opportunity for the community to uh, sell itself and to uh, show off what we have. Um, and so it's important that the safety plan uh, matches what we need um, eh, eh, from the rec. Department. And so two questions. One, uh, Kim, does it have, does the safety plan have everything um, that you are looking for? Um, is there anything that you were hoping to add? Um, and I guess I'll stop there.
Yeah, I, I think the most important thing is that typically, um, when, during the pandemic, again, we would be there to control and to at least watch it. I'm going to be out of town that weekend, um, but I know, I think Sherry pulled it together. She, you know, she worked through the, going through the ACCD and, and the CDC. I've added a couple of things, like a safety officer to be on deck, to make sure that if there's any questions from any chiefs, um, then they can go directly to her. So she did add that. It may not be in the packet. It was added to number sixteen, that she will be the safety officer, and Sherry, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
No, you're right.
So, and again, talking to um, Secretary today on the phone, we're all in support of this, the, what, and Sherry knows this, I'm not saying anything new, is that I got this the eleventh hour, and bringing this to the board the week before the event was not something that I like to practice, so um, it was just, and Sherry knows, you know, this was just one of those missed things, you know. Eh, she did the right thing, but I don't like bringing this to a board a week before the event, so I will, you know, again, that's why it's here.
Thank you. And I think the only other uh, question was around that contract, contact tracing. Um, and I'm surprised that the Vermont Department of Health isn't asking large gatherings to do that.
It, it, actually it is. It does state that any large gathering does have to have pre-registered tickets. Um,
No, that's. Kim, that's not an event venue. I talked to Secretary Curly today. We, we aren't required to have.
But I can require that, Sherry, as a superintendent, and the Board of Aldermen can require that, just like we do.
Which is fine, which is fine. I just wanted to say that, um, if we did that, which I was, like I said, I was talking with Secretary Curly, we just have to make sure that every pen is sanitized between every person that signs up. There's just, there's just a lot of um, things that you have to comply with that cause, you know, a few hurdles.
So I guess, um, I, I, uh, you know, I do think because this is the, the last meeting before the, the event, we, you know, and we do want this event. We need to support it. Um, I guess I would encourage um, the CHAFI to uh, either use uh, an online system like Eventbrite or one of those pieces where you can record that information, um, and then people who couldn't do that at that moment could write things down. I would, I, I think it would be helpful in case there is some sort of outbreak, um, that we can uh, you know, help the Department of Health and keep the spread um, from, you know, infect, affecting other businesses. But I'm, I'll support this a hundred percent, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is there any other debate on the motion to approve the special events permit for Art in the Park? Any other conditions that we choose as a board to add to Art in the Park? See none. All those in favor of according to special events permit, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. You're all seated, shimmering.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
We're on to the Board of Control Commissioners. I don't think we have any there. Unfinished business. City Attorney Proposal. Board members request for legal department resources. So I'll turn this over to Attorney Bloom.
Thank you. Um, this is something that Alderwoman Humphrey um, was uh, able to follow up on. It was a request that I had made um, last year uh, around the time that we had had kind of a labor-intensive um, uh, question asked of the legal department by um, one of the aldermen, and um, you know, the, the topic came up of you know, the utilization of, of the legal department's resources. And at the time, I had requested that the um, that the board look into um, adopting a policy um, that I've tried to kind of outline in this uh, legal, or I'm sorry, in this memorandum um, that I provided in the packet. Um, with the idea that uh, you know, the legal department's resources are, are finite. Um, and so I think it would be helpful um, to, you know, only be expending those resources when there's uh, you know, support from the board to do so. Um, I mentioned there's sometimes where there's a simple question that somebody might have, um, you know, want an opinion on or advice, or want to know how something works, and you know, we can always accommodate those. Those, those are not very time-intensive, um, but sometimes the requests, even sometimes when we get requests um, you know, that sort of filter through from outside the rail, people come, I remember, I think um, we had an up, one citizen outside the rail that was asking about some of the smoking laws and um, the city's role in enforcement um, of those, those laws, and um, projects like that do take, you know, a, a few hours to kind of run down the different um, uh, you know, statutes and ordinances and, and interfacing with state officials to see what their take is on it, and those sort of things. So I guess the request is, and this is, you know, it wouldn't be a hard and fast rule, but it would be something that I could refer to and and the board could, you know, sort of try to live by these rules for as long as they want to and before they change it. Um, that there just be kind of a, a, a vote in most cases if they're uh, when, when that's a, an option, and if it isn't an option because something is, needs to be done kind of outside of a meeting, um, that I would just try to identify how much time it would take, and then if it were to be time-consuming, we would just wait until the next meeting and, and get um, you know, have a vote taken so that we could decide whether it was something the board wanted to devote the resources to.
Okay, so is there any questions? Alderman Ryan?
Yeah, Attorney Bloomer, so this is the situation where it was just one individual alderman had requested more information that caused you to go and seek counsel, spending thirty-five hundred dollars, correct?
Yeah, I don't remember now. I don't remember how much it was or how much time um, it took, but it was, it was more than just a, you know, I would say ninety percent of it. Yeah, ninety percent of the requests are things that I can answer in, in an hour or less, and this, this happened to be something that took a little bit longer.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate transparency, and I think as a board and as a collective board, um, those types of things should be brought to the full board. There shouldn't be like an imperative of one person making a request and getting what he or she wants. Thank you.
Any other statements? So Matt, you're asking, the, the request would be to um, for the board to adopt this memorandum of understanding as far as uh, request for legal department resources.
Yeah, it would be the numbered, um, the numbered items in the memo, uh, so it would just be again, kind of like the policy that the board adopted for setting the um, the unassigned fund balance at ten percent. You know, it's something that, that that board agreed to, and that's how the treasurer prepares or has in mind when she prepares her the tax rate. This would be similar, like this would just be, you know, kind of what we've agreed on, but if it doesn't work out for whatever reason, or the board wants to do something slightly different in the future, it's obviously not an ordinance or anything that's set in stone. Um, it's just the, all of us having a chance to get on the same page as to how we want to utilize the, the resources of my department.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Uh, Alderman Humphrey, you're first?
I was actually just going to move to suspend the rule. I don't know if it means that, since this is technically, this was in committee, but.
I come back after we do a couple of uh, questions. Alderman before?
Yeah, I just want to be clear with Matt. Um, Matt, does this include, um, when you determine that you need to seek outside counsel, that you want to go to the board, because um, if a member asks you to seek outside counsel, then that would probably be a different story. But I don't believe that a member asked you to seek outside counsel in whatever that issue was. So can you just clarify that for us, please, whether it's you seeking the outside counsel or the member asking you to seek the outside counsel? Thank you.
It, um, it would be in, in either event, um, because I put a little footnote in my memo here um, that in, in effect, it doesn't really matter, because if, let's say it was a, um, I don't know, a five-hour project. Uh, if I have the time to do it, then I would do it, but it would be five hours of work that might not be getting done on some other um, some other issue, uh, because there's, there's definitely a backlog in, in my office. So it would be five hours that just something else didn't get attention. Um, if I, if I didn't feel like I had the time or it was better, you know, to have somebody else research it, then I would use my legal services budget to kind of, you know, maximize my time and farm it out to somebody else to look at, but then of course, that's whatever the cost is, is no longer available for some other um, some other use in the fiscal year. So I don't see it as a sort of distinguishing, um, you know, my time, I guess, is, is as valuable as, as, you know, any attorney that we have outside of the um, the office, so I, I've kind of proposed this as, you know, how much time it would take anybody, whether it's me or whether it would be, um, you know, hitting that budget line.
And Madam Chair, may I follow up on that, please?
Yes, sir.
So, so Matt, um, thirty-five hundred dollars. Uh, it was a simple question that was asked of you, and you gave an answer on that, and then the, the question was asked again in a different way. And somehow we got a bill for thirty-five hundred dollars for ten, I, I'm assuming that they're charging three hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Sounds kind of pricey, but wouldn't, wouldn't that, i- is that what we were billed for, was ten hours worth for thirty-five hundred dollars?
Well, the going rate is, is generally around a hundred and ninety, um, for, for most of the attorneys that we use outside legal counsel for, so if it was thirty-five hundred dollars, and again, I, I don't have the numbers handy for tonight, but um, it, it would likely.
That would be approaching, that would be approaching twenty hours worth of work for a question as to whether the Board of Aldermen or the City of Rutland could restrict uh, the school board from instituting an action on city grounds. Is that correct? So almost twenty hours worth of research is what they charged us for? I think that that's, you know, and that, that was nothing that was asked of you by me as a board member or anyone else that I'm aware of. So that was something that you decided to go out and get the outside legal counsel for, and they charged us almost twenty hours worth of work for some, a very simple question, if you ask me. Is that correct?
Yeah. Um, I would disagree about it being simple, only because, you know, anything that has anything to do with the, the Constitution um, is, you know, is sort of a maze to uh, navigate. Um, and I mean, as you'll see, like, you know, if you read people's objections to the masks and things, things like that, there aren't like straightforward answers about, you know, um, your liberties and freedom of speech and freedom of expression. So, a- and this particular firm that um, did the work, um, you know, it, it's sometimes it's hard to predict how much time something would take. But in my experience, they, they have not, I don't get big bills from them um, for a lot of the other work that, that goes to them. So I don't get the impression that they spent more time on it than, than was necessary. I think it was just that that particular question i- is, you know, involves doing a lot of research of um, you know, the US Supreme Court uh, decisions, the circuit court decisions, and so while the answer um, can sometimes be simple, getting there, you know, in a, with any kind of um, You know, accuracy involves doing quite a bit of research. So I mean, this was definitely kind of an anomaly. Like I said, I don't, I think. In the three years that I've been doing this, I maybe have, I've had two or three requests that were. You know, that were time consuming beyond, you know, just me being able to do it in in an hour or less. And so when when it was, you know, when everybody kind of questioned it at the time, my suggestion was. You know, why don't we, you know, why don't, why don't, because I I kind of felt like I didn't have. I didn't really have any. Guidance to say, you know. That yes, I could, I'll do this sort of work for people or no, I won't do this kind of work. So I wanted to sort of have the board be more proactive in as a group. You know, authorizing the the work rather than just having me either just. Do whatever anybody asks me to do, which is kind of what I do now, or be kind of a position to like. Push back and say, well, do you really need to know the answer to this because it's going to cost this much or, you know, those sort of things. So. You know, for me, it was just, it wasn't about that particular. Question at all. It was more of just recognizing that. You know, in general, this, this is something I think the board should should discuss as far as how they want to. You know, divvy that out or have a have a discussion. Something that, you know, again, may seem like it, it isn't a very time consuming task. And and most of the time that I. You know, I get that impression when people ask the questions or ask me to look into something. You know, everybody's very respectful of my time and and I think. Doesn't, doesn't sell me short on whatever our efforts are, but there's not always a. An understanding of exactly what's going to go into accomplishing that that request. So that's more of like, I think this would. Make it so that we would have that discussion if it's going to go to a vote. You know, someone probably would ask or I could volunteer that, you know, what would, what it's going to entail.
Okay, Alderman Humphrey, you want to just, I I've got you Alderman Madison Guerisso, but Alderman Humphrey's been waving me down, so see what she needs.
Tom, I I understand your frustration. I mean, this is why I sent this committee over a year ago. The the chair at the time decided to sit on it and. So now here we are. I mean, when I, and and again, all of your statements of frustration just reinforce the need to do this. So Matt feels like he can bring this to us to make sure that he's making the right move. And when I did bring this up last year, Matt was very proactive in providing a policy to us almost right away. But again, it wasn't acted on, so. I'm, I'm in total agreement with needing to have it in place.
Alderman Mattis? I'm coming Sam, you're next.
Yeah, to me, this just makes sense. You know, if Matt wants a policy, this is a very simple, straightforward policy. Looks good to me. I have a quick question, though, Matt. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the complete policy because I see a two A, but not a two B. And I just wanted to make sure that you have policy one, policy two, and policy two A, and there's nothing more than that.
Yeah, that's it. I think it's because the A goes with the two, so I didn't think it was. Best to make it, make it number three because it it's kind of a. An option under number two, I guess, or either or under number two.
Just making sure, thanks.
Alderman Guerisso.
Yes, quickly guys, if I was asked to vote in this tonight, I would only say no because I look at the letterhead and it's got one name. A million years ago, we had three attorneys. We had Henry, Chris, and Frank in there. And I'm amazed at how much Matt does now that I know he's the only guy. I've not been through a budget yet. This looks like we're spending money. I just would like to learn more. I think I would. I I know question in another meeting, I would vote for this, I think. I'd just like to know a little bit more about it. This is something else. This is very interesting. Probably the most interesting things we've dealt with tonight. So I would have to vote no right off, right for tonight because I don't. I don't know enough to to dot all the i's and cross the t's, but very, very, very interesting and it needs to be dealt with and. I I feel for Matt doing all the work that he has to do and I just need another. Whatever it is, week or two to look at it. So I know what I'm talking about and and can vote intelligently. So that's all I got to say. I I'm in on this, but not tonight.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? If not, we need a motion to suspend the rules. So moved by Alderman Humphrey. We have a second. Alderman Etori seconded. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll in, those opposed? Motion carries. So we need a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the policy of one, two, and two A. Alderman Humphrey moves. So we have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further debate on the motion to approve? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And those opposed?
No.
Okay, so we'll need a roll call vote, Henry.
Can't wait till we all get back together.
Hold tight on that one, Henry.
I got three dogs, Henry, that gotta be fed. Let's go. Yes, no.
Alderman Guerisso?
No.
Alderman Humphrey?
Yes.
Alderman Ryan?
Yes.
Alderman Etori?
Yes.
Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Woman Mattis?
Yes.
Woman Gillum?
Yes.
Alderman Clifford?
Yes.
And Alderman DePoy?
Yes.
Eight one, motion passed.
Okay, so the motion passes on a vote to eight to one. So we are back to. Is there any other miscellaneous, any other unfinished business to come before the board? Alderman Ryan?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just just wanted to remind folks that Wednesday, the fifth, five thirty PM. HR Committee meeting that I'm chairing to review the implicit bias training recommendations. And determine next steps. So. Just a reminder.
Thank you. Anyone else with unfinished business? Seeing none, we're on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Alderman DePoy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that this body meet at City Hall in Alderman Chambers on August seventeenth, our. Next meeting date.
Okay, we have a motion to return to the Aldermanic Chambers for August seventeenth, which is our next meeting date. Is there a second? Seeing none, the motion fails. Is there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or business? Alderman Gillum. Your seconded the debate? Okay, so we can second the debate. I'm going to defer to Alderman, or excuse me, I'm going to defer to Attorney Blumer. Because I believe there's guidance that comes from the state to how municipalities open their. Opens city halls or select board chambers and how they participate. So. I think we can move this motion. It doesn't mean that that it's going to happen, and I think we need to know that upfront. So Attorney Blumer.
Yeah, so the the orders have obviously been changing over time and. I am not up on the latest as far as. The number of folks that are allowed to be gathered in one room, et cetera. I know that there's, you know, now we have the mask ordinance, or I'm sorry, the mask order. From the governor. I would say without, again, having the, you know, having looked at all the orders. I would say that if there was. Interest in in having some folks who are comfortable to meet in person. That we could probably somehow do that. We, I don't think we'd want to open it to the public, so we would still have. We would still have to have a component of it be through go to meetings so that the public could could join in this way. I don't know if logistically we'd have to give more thought to whether it actually ends up being worse to have, say, five people in chambers and. Six people on this plus the public. But if that's something that, again, it's kind of a good example of what we just passed. If that's something that the the rest of the board would be interested to know, you know, what the options would be. So I think I'm sure there is some. You know, appeal to getting back together in person and conducting these meetings more in person. Then we can, we can look into that and sort of give you the, you both the law and the recommendations. That we would have as far as how to, how to conduct it within the law.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to return to the chambers for our next meeting on August seventeenth, and it's been seconded. Is there any further debate on the motion to return to the chambers? Alderman DePoy. Remember, we have an executive session after this.
Don't worry, I'll take till midnight on this then. So here, here's my point here, folks. You know, we're asking who's on the line. We're asking who's, you know, here with us in. Virtual reality type of thing every time that we're on here. So half the time, we don't know who's talking. Half the time, Mike, you know, internet is either, you know, going in or out. I know Alderman Guerisso said that he was having trouble hearing stuff tonight, didn't even hear what Chrissy Tori was saying. I go through meetings and I'm not hearing half of what's said sometimes in in not the whole meeting, but in some of these cases. It's getting annoying. I'm looking at the Vermont Department of Health website right now. And as of today, there are five people being monitored in all of Rutland County. Okay, I don't know how many are in the city. Last I heard the other day, there was one person being monitored in the City of Rutland. For coronavirus and they didn't even, they weren't even sure that the person had coronavirus. I understand we don't want to expose ourselves or others to any kind of diseases. You know, coronavirus especially, but also, you know, whether it be the common flu or anything else. It's getting very annoying. To me and to a lot of other people that I've spoken to who think that this is has gone far enough. As long as we take the proper protocols, we should be meeting in person, you know, obviously wear masks, obviously socially distanced, whatever. We don't shake hands when we go in. But there are a lot of people that would like to come before the board and express opinions on things too and not, you know, call in or have to worry about the technology. To get in because they might not have the technology. And, you know, my point here is this, we've done this for a long time. This state. And this county and this city have been extraordinarily diligent about the safety and not. Exposing ourselves and others to this pandemic. We are a green city, a green county, a green state on the chart that we were talking about earlier. You know, it's, it's time to get back to 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 real governance, which I believe starts at City Hall. And. I I think we should start meeting again on August seventeenth in person so that we can debate these issues in person. We know who's debating us from outside the rail or bringing information to us from outside of the rail without just somebody talking over the phone. That's why I presented this motion. It's time we start talking about. Getting back to work and getting back to doing what the people of the city of Rutland need us to do, and that's govern.
There he goes, he's gone.
I'm here, did, how?
I'm sorry.
Did people hear me?
Alderman Etori has. Alderman Etori has the floor.
Okay, did you hear everything I said? I'm sorry.
We did, Alderman DePoy, thank you. So I'm, you know, I'm in agreement with a lot of what Alderman DePoy said. I think we govern better when we're together. I think we talk better when we're together. I think we understand things better when we're in the same room. We can, you know. We're all getting the same things versus the distractions that are coming from, you know, around us at home. That being said, I think we need to look into it. I I I think we need to figure out what that looks like. You know, when I was asking. Acting Mayor now, Whitcomb, about when we could go back, there was a conversation of six feet apart, masks. You know, how do you fit that many people in the chambers, et cetera, et cetera? I think there's some planning that has to be done. But I would be in favor of pushing us in that direction of meeting in person. I'm not sure August seventeenth is the, you know, the day to start that. But I'm in favor of us coming back together again. I think we'll do, it'll be better for everyone if we can start meeting in person. But I'm not quite sure about August seventeenth yet without having more information about what we need to make it happen.
So thank you very much, Madam Chairman. A while ago, Attorney Blumer asked me to make a motion to 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 go back into the chambers and. Boy, it was kind of early. Some people laughed at me. But as I remember what he came back with, were a real couple of really. Reasonable ones was we have that rail in there that wouldn't allow us to move the desks out to have our own distancing. Then we've got the rail on the other side that we can't control how many people come in that room. And if there's a debated issue in there, everybody has to have the right to be in that room. And God knows, we've all seen it packed over the years. So. That right there kind of put us in trouble. Alderman DePoy mentioned a mask. I don't like them. I have to tell you. If I gotta wear a mask, I'm going to stay home and do it on the computer or whatever. But it really bothers me and I hope Ms. Peters doesn't think I don't like her or beating her up. I am concerned about the Halloween parade. You're talking to a guy that for twenty five, twenty eight years, I helped put the VFW parade together. And I sat in many, many meetings from from October to to May. And we would run that parade all the way up to Candle Avenue by the school. We've got all that real estate outdoors and we should be able to put that parade on. And we should be able to have the Halloween parade outdoors, have enough room for social distancing, let the kids wear their masks and their Halloween masks. What a sad thing to take away from Rutland. And I really hope we can all get to, yes.
You need to stay on topic. We're talking about whether or not we go back to the chambers. I don't think.
Well, exactly. I'm sorry. And and that's my point is I'd like to do something for the voters and to heck with us right now because I. I think there's a lot more problems with us in that room. I really do. I I just soon stay home until we get get this issue straightened out. It's it's going to be a mess in there.
Thank you. Alderman Clifford?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. While I agree with a lot of things that Alderman DePoy has stated. I have a question for Matt. City Attorney. Is this the mayor's call? I believe it is the mayor's call whether or not to return to the City Hall or not. Am I, am I correct or not?
Uh, I'm not positive, I guess, who has jurisdiction over the building. You might be right that the mayor. You know, I think it's definitely the mayor's call as to operationally, the fact that that it's closed right now to the public. You know, it's a good question, I guess, whether the board could overrule either that decision or the decision to kind of keep the board out. You know, as Alderman Guerisso said, I think for me, the main, the main hurdle. With what I think the rules probably are is that, and even for safety purposes, even if you're allowed to pack, you know, a hundred people in there. I think there's still going to be people that are uncomfortable with that. And so. The main problem is that you don't know how many people are going to come to the meeting. So I think you're always going to have to offer the auxiliary. Space where they can, you know, participate from either afar or a different room or a different set of rooms in City Hall. So that's the part that I think would be the main hurdle. Now that there's the masking order and the social distancing, you know, you probably could get. Eleven people or, you know, however many people we have, I guess it's more than eleven, but. We can probably get six feet of distance with the masks and, you know, technically be within the law, but there's, I think, other, other aspects. You know, particularly the public's participation that would be, would still, I think, necessitate having this set up in some, in some fashion. And then again, other people's, some people may be uncomfortable even under those circumstances because they're higher risk and, you know, that's, I think. What we'll run into if we do research it and and try to come up with a recommendation.
Alderman Etori?
Oh, I was just going to add, I think that we have other pla- um, other properties in the city, whether it's God Nick or the CSJ Gym, where we could be spread out more. If we, if that was, i- i- in terms of numbers, that would be the issue. Um, I, I think it's worth looking into more, uh, how we can do this. Um, I do think at some point, um, if we don't go back anytime soon, you know, throughout the winter, we're probably going to be back on, on this format for, you know, some periodic times. Um, I, I appreciate sitting with you all guys all, like, all night long.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor, it was seconded, to return to the Alderman Chambers via- All those in favor, please say aye.
Can I make a motion to, uh, just send the issue to committee?
Well, you need to withdraw the motion that you have on the floor.
Uh, withdraw and, and send the, uh, make a motion to send to committee.
Okay, does the motioner agree? The seconder agree? That was you, Billy, okay? So now your new motion is to send to what committee?
Um, well, I'll leave that to your discretion, Madam Chair. I was thinking either rec because Alderman Natori brought up a good point. We could have it down at the CSJ Gym. Or it could go to general, which is probably where it should go first, but, um, I'll leave it up to you.
So anyway, but, um, general committee seems really nonspecific, so that would be my suggestion. It is up to you folks. So you want to move to general? Alderman DePoy?
I, I'll say general.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
So, we have a motion on the floor and it's been seconded to cer- to, um, send the issue of the Alderman attorney to the Aldermanic Chambers or at least meeting, uh, in person in some form. Is there any other debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board? Alderman Clifford?
Just wanted to, uh, say, uh, Ricky Baddell's retired today from the Public Works Department for, after forty years. Just want to wish him-
Absolutely, congratulations and thank you very, very much for your service. Alderman DePoy? Miscellaneous motions, resolution, new business?
I would like to make a motion to send the issue of the Halloween parade to the Recreation Committee.
Second.
Okay, is there any to, any to debate on having, or sending the Halloween parade to the Recreation Committee? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
An aye.
Motion carries. No, motion doesn't carry. We need a roll call vote.
Who said no?
Uh, I said, Alderman Mattis said no.
So Halloween parade. Alderman Gurusso?
Uh, uh, yes.
Alderman Humphrey?
Sure.
Alderman Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, Alderman Natori?
Yes.
Uh, Alderman Talbot?
Yes.
Alderman Mattis?
No.
Alderman Gillum?
Yes.
Uh, Alderman Clifford?
Yes.
And Alderman DePoy?
Yes.
Eight one, motion pass.
Right, so eight one, the motion passes, it has been referred to Recreation Committee. Is there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board? If not, we have an executive session. Um, it, uh, Attorney Blumer could give us, uh, the motion to go in. And you do, I believe you all received, uh, an email from Attorney Blumer with the link to connect to, to go in. Remember, we will leave this, um, with a motion, go into executive session, and then come back here if there's any, um, action to be taken.
Do we know if this is the same, uh, phone number, uh, Attorney Blumer? Will I need to call back in at a different number? I don't know if I have that.
Yeah, Henry, I don't think I, I don't, I don't think I did include you, so I'll forward it to you now.
Okay, that's okay, I can go home, I don't have a problem with that.
I'm sending it to you right now.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion would be to find a premature general public knowledge regarding probable litigation to which the city would be a party, clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because of discussion, will divulge the city strategy in such probable litigation, and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
All moved?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
And then a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the city attorney, the treasurer, and the acting mayor to discuss probable litigation as allowed under Title I, Section 313A1E and Title I, Section 313A1F.
All moved?
Second.
And, uh, any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries, all right? We'll see you on the other side.